Revenue expenses. You know, we're bringing this. Six hundred dollars more. Finishes and we are.
And we are live.
Do this. According to that, we're going to show her a thousand dollars more. Because revenue. The expenditures.
This this year?
Yeah, well, I'm talking about this year.
Well, it's seven o'clock and the meeting will be in order. This is the regular monthly meeting of the City of Prospect City Council. November twenty one, twenty twenty two. And the first order of business on our agenda is, as always, the request for the approval of the minutes of the previous regular meeting, which was on October seventeenth. Are there any additions or corrections to be suggested?
I just have a side note. I did a follow up with Dr. Stacy Postfeld on events that we discussed. And she said, well, just go ahead and drop it. Because she was selling the property and they had picked another location. Of course, they know they were moving to.
Well, that's interesting, but back to the minutes. Are there any suggestive corrections or additions? Hearing none will move to a vote. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed. All opposed. Hearing none, the ayes have it and the minutes are approved. And the next agenda item is my report. Really brief. First, starting this Wednesday, the torn up section of the exit on Hunting Creek Drive will be getting repaved with concrete. Reason for the concrete is that the concreted section will be stamped to look like pavers. During that time, the signs will showing, there will be street signs that will show exiting cars how to use the short section of the incoming lane and then cut back to the normal exit lane. So the signs will direct the traffic where to go. That'll be the situation for at least a week while the concrete cures. Next, I think I might have mentioned a little something about this last time, but the repaving the city hall parking area, as well as the expanded parking lot has been completed. I think it looks good. Third, in Little Hunting Creek Park, the pavilion is nearly completed. As of the playground area, there are a few safety adjustments that need to be done. Once both of those things are completed, a landscaping plan for the park will be put together in the near future, followed after that by the implementation of that landscaping plan. Fourth, as most of you know by now, the planning commission again recommended approval of the Prospect Cove L D G apartment project. My information is that this matter may come before the Metro Council at their December fifteenth meeting, which implies to me that it may not. So we don't know right now. Now, the next council meeting of our council is December twelfth. I'm sure we'll know more by that time and maybe before. My experience with those Metro Council meetings on of this kind is that you don't get a chance to speak anyway, but you might want to be there. So we'll get the word out. And last, I wanted to mention that I have found out that the COVID virus is still active in our community. And I know this. I know some of you and several of my other friends have had this COVID. And I found out on November ninth. I had a very severe sore throat. I thought it was strep. I went to the doctor and he said, no, you have COVID. So they lasted, those symptoms lasted for only about three days. And then I started feeling better. And at my age, I credit the vaccinations and boosters for the fact that it was fairly brief and not worse. So other than that, if there are any questions, be okay, Tom. If not, we'll move on. Moving on. Let's see, where's that? Agenda got buried here. Forestation Board Report. Mr. Tucci, do you have a report for us?
That's okay.
Well, Linda's not the forestation guy you are.
Okay. The board met by Webex on the eighth and some of the major points we discussed were the tree maintenance budget. We originally had twenty thousand dollars in the budget. And in the first half of the fiscal year, about half of that has been spent. Thirteen thousand one hundred dollars was spent on removing two big trees from city property. One of the trees was in Putney, close to a house. And the other one was a little area between Fox Harbor and Hunting Harbor. City actually owns a little piece of land back up there. And we spent about twenty seven hundred for wiring and because of the route conditions, we wanted to protect the trees. So in any case, the maintenance budget is close to being exhausted. And we were talking with Ron about increasing or asking for an increase, probably at least another twenty thousand for the balance of the fiscal year. We had our Arbor Fest on Saturday, October twenty ninth. The public attendance was a little lighter than usual, but forty five mostly flowering trees were given out. And we're hoping that when Little Hunting Creek gets operating and maybe some events are scheduled, next fall, we'll get a little better attendance. We had a tree canopy program this year, which resulted in six larger trees being ordered by residents. That's where the city shares cost of the purchase and professional planting of the trees. And we're planning to have a spring program where we're going to offer four to six species to for residents, basically the same type of program, trees more suited for spring planting rather than fall planting. And in current planning, we're planning a couple of replacement trees in in Colley Park and Hunting Creek Exit where trees have died. And we're planning one of two memorial trees for Linda's family relatives, and that'll go in off of Putney Lane and in Putney Park. And the next tree is slated to go into Little Hunting Creek Park once the final tree program and plan is set up. And another major item we're doing right now, we're working on our Tree City filing. Prospect has been a Tree City since really two thousand nine. We were, you know, the board established, was established by ordinance in December two thousand seven. In two thousand eight, we worked to beat all the qualifications for Tree City. And we've been a Tree City ever since, but they require annual recertification. We're getting together the data, mostly that's how many trees were planted, how much money was spent, how many trees were taken out. It's that type of thing. We certainly expect to meet all the requirements. And the next meeting is December thirteenth will be after the council meeting. But that's our regular Tuesday meeting on the Forestation Board. We like to stay on the schedule if we can. So we have a freedom of agenda, you might say. Or if we change it, we have to announce special agenda, special meeting. It's sort of an administrative campaign. Any questions?
I just have one. You were talking about the budget, the maintenance budget for the trees.
Right.
And I understand, I understand the issue. Are you assuming responsibility for some things that might have been in years past in other parts of the budget?
I didn't quite hear you.
Are you, as a group, assuming responsibility for things that in years past would have gone into other components of the budget?
I will think so. I think what's happening, first of all, we have a tree staging. Then we have force of your weapon. Sometimes we have to my brain, I have rain, we drought and I just want one of them. These are all, these ones have all spent on city owned trees.
Yeah, I understand.
We've also had requested many residents to take down evidence freezing from the back. Last of them, there's a more than because of the eighteen and one hundred.
Okay, thank you very much.
Lee?
Yes.
Do you have, we've spoken about this over the years, but do you have a program for trimming the trees back over the, over the streets?
Well, the answer is yes. And if we're talking about the city on the streets, there's two more. There's four stations where it's that require trees to be trimmed around stop signs. And it's clear if we see avenues, then this is going to be overhanging the street, the forestation board has requested many of those. Those are being taken down, all the things. Requested other trees where they're just pretty green. And also, but as Jason, we around round twenty two, there are those hazardous tree situations that sometimes needed. So we're going to grant it with a request of the state that take it down. Trees or tree trees that is ready for two. And there's certainly going to be one with my file of all the part of twenty two that are between bridge planting by San San Francisco.
I, I'm more concerned with encroachment and clearances. Sam, Hunting Creek Drive. Yeah, there are trees. They, you know, we had discussions about how high they, they should be trimmed and those type of things. And that doesn't seem to be having much priority.
Well, we'll take another book apart. Over the years, I'm taking down the trip.
And you've planted some trees that grow straight up.
Straight up.
Pretty much. And that solved a lot of problems, but some of them still exist. And the, also, are you working with the code enforcement officer when it comes to encroachment on highways or on streets?
We would like to work more with code enforcement. But we're both in time. I'm exhausted. That usually does. If we see hazardous tree situation that's really angry, that's the clar.
Well, I'm, I'm talking about encroachment. I'm not talking about hazard. I mean, it's difficult to see in the winter.
People that act independently upon the needs for us around stop signs, they weren't as pretty clear about that. In fact, the nuisance warning requires a greater color to care. On the bottom street.
Yeah.
Sidewalks, trees, and it also requires who their access, which official access to the stop sign.
So what you're telling me is really nobody's really doing it.
Well, we think it's a good accident. We do, people report that it's citizens are reporting, very important.
Well, again, I'm, I'm talking about, I'm talking about encroachment and clearances. Not hazardous. I mean, that's a whole different, that's a whole different deal. That's okay. You've answered my question. Nobody's doing anything.
And you mentioned four to six species would be offered. What, what species do you find are most appropriate for Prospect? Which ones grow best? Which ones survive and look best here in Prospect?
Well, the, the answer to your question, we have a boy, the city employees, a really talented farmer, Andrew, and she's a consultant over, she knows the cell tree, she knows to cut down trees. But she's very knowledgeable tree. She worked for Anthony in the middle of cities. So she tries to pick a tree or trees that would be appropriate for the sites or for the season. And in the case of spring trees, there might be trees more suitable. We discussed at the last meeting for spring planting than winter planting. It's not a big difference, but there's a. And she's, she's coming up right now with a list recommended in Forestation Board. Then the board has the bow on it. Let's say, yes, we'll accept these trees or offer these trees or not. We're almost always take the regular thing. That's kind of the story.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, Lee, this is Greg. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for that great report. I had a question under the, the canopy tree program. And I see that on your report that the last canopy program resulted in six potentially large trees being ordered by residents. So that's all fine. I just wanted to, my concern is that these trees will be between the sidewalks and the streets. So that happens to be where the utilities are. So as these trees are being handed out, I guess, I know it's a cost sharing basis by the city. Are you or is someone from the city explaining the responsibilities to the homeowner? So that they know that, especially if it's a potentially large tree, that they're responsible and the city is not responsible? Is that kind of dialogue happening?
Basically, yes. But the total.
Lee?
Greg, the answer basically is yes. And we're, we're trying to avoid situations where people will want to plant a big tree between the sidewalk and the street, and then the, the roots would rip up the sidewalk, you know, a few years later. And we're also looking, the, the idea of canopy trees actually is that they, they're big shade trees that would shade the street and the sidewalk. The last offering we had was very specific about what distance from the street trees could be planted. We're thinking we might change that a little bit and allow residents to also order those trees for planting in, in their rear area. If that's the most suitable location and they're willing to plant and want to plant a tree, it's going to give shade anyhow. If it just shades even their house, we've accomplished the main purpose of, of a tree planting.
Thank you.
Lee, is this the same program you had last year?
Yeah, we had this program last year and it resulted in five residents ordering six trees, including one, the one in your area. Right.
But so the trees weren't exactly handed out. As I recall, it was, it was like a hundred and twenty dollars a tree or something to cover the tree and the planting. And it was a pretty good description of each one of the trees offering and
Right.
what they did. Some were the columns, some were spread out, some tended to be smaller. But they weren't exactly handed out. They, they were, you paid for them and, and they were professionally planted and with a derogatory and all that. It's a good program.
I'd like to say that the council has, over many years since the Forestation Board was established, has really supported the forestation effort. And this has resulted in hundreds of trees being planted on the city land. Most of, most of the hundreds being done along Harris Creek Park where we got extra money from M S D, but also all over and also the distribution to residents of hundreds of trees, mostly flowering trees, which are now growing in Prospect. So the total number is several hundred. Trees have been added and it's, it's due to the support of, of the council, the financing for these programs. So thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lee. And next on the agenda, we have Bill Meyer and Jennifer French from Straffman and Company to present their work on our twenty twenty two audit. Either you, Bill, or you, Jennifer.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Hello, council members. My name's Bill Meyer. I'm the partner in charge of this audit engagement. Jennifer French is a principal with our firm and oversees the day to day work on the audit. The audit is complete. You're being presented with a preliminary draft subject to your approval. Once you have all your questions answered, we are in a position to issue the audit. The audit went well. We got everything we needed on a timely basis to be able to issue the audit report. I was going to make a few comments about the report and then we'd be glad to take any questions. And then Jennifer is going to cover some management recommendations that we have. So I, I think you're somewhat familiar with the governmental financial statements, but just let me review that a little bit. The, the format of the financial statements and the required disclosures are dictated by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, also referred to as GASB. So even though these statements are long and, and have a lot of stuff in them, it's not our fault. It's not the, anyone's fault except the GASB. This is all required information. The other thing that's somewhat unusual with governmental financial statements is that these statements contain financial statements presented in two different ways. What's called the government wide financial statements are designed to be more similar to a for profit company in that they include capital assets, fixed assets on the balance sheet. And they also include certain liabilities, primarily your pension, your share of the state pension liability, as well as the other post employment liability that's allocated to you based on the number of employees that you have. So the, the fund financial statements, which begin on page six, are the traditional accounting, fund accounting that we've been using in the governmental world for the last, I don't know, thirty, forty, fifty years. So that's and that's kind of what you budget off of and so forth. But again, the GASB and their wisdom decided that these need to be presented in a couple of different ways. The audit opinion is a unmodified opinion or a clean audit opinion. It's different than last year's audit opinion. That's not because of anything other than the fact that the auditing standards changed the wording of the audit opinion for all audit opinions, for both government and for profit companies. So if you, if you compare the audit opinion to last year's opinion, it's different, but it basically says the same thing, and that it's a clean audit opinion. The government wide financial statements start on page four. And as I mentioned before, the, the key difference in these financials and the fund financials are on the balance sheet and under assets, you have capital assets recorded as an asset of the city. And then down under liabilities, you have the net pension liability and other post employment benefit liability. So that's basically an allocation that the state comes up with for every city and governmental entity, and they supply those numbers. The fund financial statements, as I said, start on page six. And the, which is the balance sheet. And then on page eight, it's the statement of revenues, expenditures and changes in fund balance. And again, this is on a fund accounting basis, same basis we've been using for many, many years. You'll see towards the bottom of the page, the net change in fund balances is an increase of three hundred thirty five thousand eight fifty. And your total ending fund balance is a little over three point eight million dollars. So all the financial statements I've ever seen for the City of Prospect have been generally good and have had surpluses each year. So that's not always the case with other organizations. The, the required notes to the financial statements begin on page ten. And they're very similar to last year's notes. Again, a lot of required disclosures about your accounting policies and so forth. You'll see on page eighteen, there's a summary of the capital assets of the city. If you had debt, which you don't, bonds and so forth, those would be in these notes. Starting on page twenty of the financial statements, almost through the end, there's fifteen pages of required disclosures about the pension plan and the other post employment benefit plan. So those, while that goes on and on and on, it's really hard to read. That's a required, those are all required disclosures. So again, the audit's substantially complete, subject to your review. And we do have some management comments, but be glad to take any questions that you might have right now about the statements. Well, if, if you like, we'll go ahead and you can save those if you have them and we'll get Jennifer cover some.
I had, I had one question.
Sure.
On the liability section, between compensated absences, net pension liability and post employment benefit liability is about one point eight million dollars, actually a little over one point eight million dollars. Is there any requirement on the city to reserve funds to, to cover those liabilities?
No. I, I get the question a lot, is that a real liability or not? And it's, the answer is yes and no. It's no, in that you don't have to write a check for it anytime soon. But yes, it is a real liability because the way you'll satisfy or reduce that liability is over the years, you'll pay higher and higher percentages into the pension fund. And eventually, over the years, that liability will reduce. So it's not an immediate thing. And it's, it's as you, as you might be aware of, with, with actuarially computed liabilities, those can change from year to year based on the assumptions used for rate of return on investments and retirement rates and all that kind of stuff. So probably a longer answer than you wanted, but that's.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Jennifer, why don't you go through what you were going to cover with them, please? You might be muted.
Okay, it helps when you're not muted. Sorry about that. Um, we were on site for about a week. We worked directly with John and Julie and they were very cooperative and got us everything we needed. And we even met with the mayor a couple of days while we were on site. So we do appreciate everybody's assistance in getting the audit done. As with any audit, we always have recommendations for improvements. And as we work on the audit, we learn, it seems like something new every year. This year, we have a recommendation regarding the police department's petty cash. The police department has their own separate petty cash that is separate from management. And I assume that's because the police department's always functioning and management's not always there. But it brought to our attention when we wanted to audit that, that that had not been audited or reconciled since the year two thousand nineteen. So we are recommending that there are controls in place to make sure that the activity out of the police department's petty cash is at a minimum reported to John, so that can get in your books and records. I think funds taken in for various things such as fingerprinting or report copies were deposited or put in the petty cash box and then used to pay out expenses. And when they do that, they're, they're not captured on your, your official trial balance. So we just, we kind of paid attention to that. Some housekeeping. We also noted that prior auditors, when we inherited this audit a couple of years ago, the land, how it's recorded on your books is kind of recorded in a lump sum. The cost of acquisition of the land is not segregated by parcel tract. So therefore, if land is sold and proved upon, it's hard to determine out of that lump sum on the books of allocate those, correctly allocate those costs. So we're recommending, I know John has been doing some deed searches and everything to get a listing of. to get a listing of parcels and their estimated fair market value of when they were on your books.
Jennifer, can I jump in for a second?
We have not found anything wrong or any wrongdoings. These are just opportunities to strengthen your record-keeping processes going forward. I'm sorry, was somebody saying something?
Yeah, I wanted to jump in for a second. I've been here for nine and a half years, and in all that time, I don't recall the city buying a single piece of land. So I don't know what it is that we're not doing that we ought to be doing. I mean, if you're talking about buying a piece of land, we haven't done that. Now, we did have one land swap, one piece of land for another, but that wasn't a purchase.
Correct.
Let me, let me try to answer that. So you might recall, I mentioned a minute ago, that the, kind of the traditional way of accounting was fund accounting, and that the GASB required the other way of reporting that requires fixed assets to be listed. So that, that came into play probably 10 or 12 years ago. So at that time, all cities and really all governmental entities did an inventory of all of their land and all of their fixed assets, and was required to put that on their books. So at that point, before your time and before our time, somebody went through that exercise to determine, you know, exactly what fixed assets and land could be found. But that detail of what was in that land number originally is, has been lost to us, apparently.
That was gonna be my question, did you find that? And I think you're saying no.
No, no.
So basically, we've got a little historical research to do, right?
Well, actually, are you talking about, when you talk about years ago, are you talking about the value of the land at that time? Or like Mayor's saying, are you talking about a purchase? Because I agree with the mayor, there have been no purchases. The bulk of the land that is ours is not buildable and was donated to us. So how would you carry something like that?
Yes, that's an excellent question. So back when this new standard was implemented that required land to be put on the books, the research project that all governmental entities were to go through was to go back and, to the best of their ability, determine the cost when that land was originally added. So if it's been around for many, many years, the cost might be negligible, but at some point.
Or there was no cost, because it was donated.
Yes, exactly. Right.
It was not buildable.
Are you confusing cost with value?
No, cost is the number that should, you should carry it on, your book's at.
So if it's donated, it's zero cost, regardless of commercial value?
When it actually donated, the accounting standards define that at fair value at the time of donation.
So, okay.
Jennifer and Bill, with the fact that improvements would be made to one parcel as opposed to another, would that play into this accountability?
Yes, the improvements to any parcel of land should be tracked with, along with that parcel. Now, let me say that as far as the effect of this on your day-to-day operations, it doesn't have an effect. I mean, this is a, again, land was never recorded on governmental entities' books for many, many years. This was just a new accounting standard, you know, a number of years ago. So if you didn't do what we suggest, it's not the end of the world. It's just that you have a number on your books. It would be helpful to know exactly what's in that number.
And yeah, this came about as the mayor said there was a land swap. So basically, the land that was swapped, that parcel needed to come off your books, and then the new parcel come on. But since the land was recorded pretty much in a lump sum, that was not, we were not able to decipher what land swapped out should have come off the books, basically.
I may need to ask for your help, because, let me give you an example. I think the year was 1999, when the city sold all of its sewer system, including its three sewer plants, its package plants, sold them all to MSD. I imagine the dollar number for that sale is around somewhere, but it was 23 years ago, so we'd have to scratch a bit to get that. Okay, so then MSD decommissioned those three sewer plants, okay? Each one sitting on a piece of land previously owned by the city. And after they decommissioned those plants and cleaned up the sites, they gave those pieces of land back to the city. So we got back land that had originally belonged to us, but it didn't cost us anything. Then to make it even more complicated, one of those pieces of land, well, it was a couple of things. They not only got the three sewer plant lands, but they also got what is now Little Hunting Creek Park. The reason they got that is that it was a mistake. They shouldn't have gotten it in the first place. So about two or three years ago, I can't remember if Chris Gorman was with me or not, but I went down there, I said, "Look, you guys, you were not entitled to this piece of land. You should give it back." And you know what? They did. So we got back a piece of land that originally belonged to us. It didn't cost us anything to get it back. Then, one of the package plant parcels is what we did, engaged in this swap, to get a different parcel of land in exchange for this one parcel that was given back to us by MSD. So I don't know how in the world they're gonna figure all that out, but that's the story. That's what we're faced with in trying to come up with awesome stuff that doesn't have a cost.
Yeah, that's, that's one of the advantages of being an auditor. We can make suggestions to do things, but don't have to actually carry them through. So trying to be funny.
Don't we know.
Again, this is not the end of the world if you don't do this. It's just, you know, we didn't really, you know, we're able to accept audited financial statements from prior auditors as the basis for things like the land. So this was really the first year we realized that you didn't have a detail of it. You should, if it's, if it's super hard to do it, it, you know, if it can't be done, it can't be done. Or if it takes a lot of time and effort, it's not worth it. It's just that if some research could be done to figure out, really figure out what they did, you know, this many years ago, when they put that number on the books, there's probably a schedule around in a box somewhere. But again, it's not the end of the world if you don't do it.
Okay, well, we're not going to jail today.
Okay, I get it.
What else you got, Jennifer?
We noted that the police department maintains their own invoices for checks that were paid as support. And when we were on-site, it took additional time to get those invoice copies. And we're just recommending that the records of the city, whether it's the police department or any department, just be centrally housed. That's just the best practices recommendation. And then, of course, since you do have a limited staff with John and Julie, we always recommend improving segregation of duties, like looking at bank statements and everything. Again, we didn't find anything wrong. It's just, that's, that's one you're always gonna have, just based on the size of your staff. And that, that's all we have.
Well, I guess that's good news. Thank you. Any more questions for Strothman?
Yeah, I just got one at the front. But on page 36 is a, is the type of sheet that I'm most used to looking at. And I see the total expenditures exceeded budget by $53,000 and chain. Does that mean that we didn't end with balanced budget at the end of the year?
No, you actually, your final budget, budget of revenues was $4,551,000, and your actual revenues were $4,846,000. So you were, your revenues were $294,000 over your budget, which was, which was good. And yes, you spent 53 more than the budget, but overall, net-net, you had an increase of $241,000. So. So yes, you were over budget in your expenditures slightly, but your revenue increased more than made up for that.
And I think the primary reason your expenses were up a little bit were the additional fees regarding the LDG litigation. And then there was an engineering study on the site, the Highway 42 site, I believe. And then the construction of the pavilion was underway also at your end.
I'm gonna want to take a look at that, because the figures I get every month from our, sometimes more than every month, from our bookkeeper, I'm not aware of any area in which we have been over budget. So maybe we need to get you and her and me together and find out what we're talking about here.
But overall, you are under budget. You took in more revenues than expenses.
And that's not my point. I'm not allowed to spend money that's not in the budget. And what I'm hearing from you is that I did.
Yes, that's an excellent question. We'll get with your folks and see what, what the disconnect there is.
Yeah, because there definitely is one.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think that is, I think that is an important thing to figure out.
We will do it.
Well, one other additional thing you probably ought to look at is, according to the October numbers, as, as I read them, we're looking at a deficit of almost $600,000 over the budget in this year, if I look at, if I'm reading the numbers correctly.
You and I need to look at that together, because I'm not aware of that. And that's a big number, Ken.
All right, are you talking about the fiscal '23 budget?
I am.
Okay, so yeah, that's not part of this, but.
Looks like excess of revenues over expenditures are projected to be $585,000 for '22, if I'm reading that correctly.
Do you have in front of you what you're reading?
I didn't bring the whole report, but it's the, it's the October report. October financials.
That's the Kelly King report.
Correct.
That's just the last page.
But that doesn't, that doesn't relate to this audit.
No, it doesn't. I'm just, I'm just pointing it out that we had an excess over budget in '22, and it looks like we're gonna have an excess of expenditures over revenue in '23, and we ought to look at that. If I'm reading the numbers correctly, which I may not.
We'll follow up.
And we'll follow up, Dale.
Thank you.
So is that it?
That's it, from our perspective.
Anything else? Thank you both for coming, and glad we could do it with you by WebEx.
Yeah, thanks for allowing us to serve you. Have a good rest of your meeting.
Yeah. Okay, back to the agenda. Linda Wardell has been waiting very patiently to give the Parks Committee report.
This is more fun than audit reports. Although in a prior life, I did do some auditing and financial planning, so. I'd like to report on a couple of events that took place in the parks over the last two months. First, on October 22nd, we had our first annual Children's Craft Event. This was planned by committee member Sally Schneider and her cousin Lauren Becker, who is an amazing artist and teacher of young children. We had about a dozen children and their parents, and sometimes younger siblings, some babies, that attended the event. It was a beautiful day. We met at the picnic tables in Harrah's Creek Park. And the kids got to use their imagination and materials, natural materials at hand to make a clay piece of art. It could be a, like an ornament that they could put in a window or hang on a tree. One of the little boys, the, one of the little boys in that picture right, right there, said, "Why would I want to make an ornament? I want to build something." And so he and his buddy started out building a fort and then turned it into another building. The woman seated at the table in the middle between the kids is Lauren Becker, and it was her idea for coming up with this craft. So she gave her time to us and, and just asked to be reimbursed for the materials. But the kids just had a great, a great time, and we couldn't have asked for better weather. So Sally has recruited a couple of other Prospect residents to assist in planning the next children's event. And we're going to have that, it's scheduled to take place on Saturday, January 21st. Might be too cold for the parks, so we're planning to hold it in the Prospect Library. And this event will include a storytime. We plan to have a reading of Shel Silverstein's "The Giving Tree." And then Lauren has come up with another project for the kids. They will use wire and craft paper to make three-dimensional trees, that small ones they can take home, and then assist in building a larger one that we hope will be able to keep in the children's area of the library. And it will be sturdy enough that for various seasons of the year, we can decorate it with books or other things appropriate to the season. So I'm really excited about this. I think it's going to be a fun program. And the people that participated in the first one are already looking forward to our next event. The second event that took place also at Harrah's Creek Park happened yesterday, and that was the Harrah's Creek Trail Bash. And I'm not sure if this was the fifth or sixth annual. You can't really see the trail in that picture. The picture might be too big. The report is, it was cold, but it was clear yesterday, very sunny. There were about 110 runners that took place, took part. We received several comments about the beauty of Harrah's Creek Park and how well-maintained the trails are. And after the event, the park was completely cleaned up. I actually went back and hiked the trails yesterday afternoon. It was a beautiful day. It was much warmer in the afternoon. I went down to the parking lot. It was completely filled. So not only did we have 110 runners in the morning, we had at least participants with 20 cars in the afternoon, and there were half a dozen cars parked on Montero Drive. So the park was very well utilized yesterday, and it was just great. Everything looked beautiful. And I have to commend Ron's crew, because they made sure that the leaves were blown off the trail. And any, we had a couple of trees over the past couple of weeks that, again, fell across the trails, and they had those cleared so that the runners had no obstacles that they had to contend with. So a big thanks to Ron and his crew. In terms of other Parks projects I'd like to report on, the Harrah's Creek Bridge project, we had bid, bids were required to be submitted before October 31st for that project, and they were opened on that day. Unfortunately, all of the bids greatly exceeded what we had budgeted for the bridge. So we're now working with our consultant and getting some ideas about other ways to do this project that might be less expensive. Our consultant did say that every project he has been involved with, when it went out to bid in the last two years, has greatly exceeded expectations. And that's, you know, a lot of that is the pandemic supply chain, cost of materials, and that sort of thing. So we'll have to think long and hard about how to, how to maybe do that project a different way. And finally, we've had some discussion in the past about the desire to build a boardwalk along Putney Pond. And we are going to walk with a landscape design person tomorrow, actually, Don Gibson and Ron Kandef and myself. And our plan is for tomorrow's event is to try to get an idea what it would cost to have a design created. Because before we do anything more, we've got to figure out how, where it's going to be, how it would be constructed. And we need to find out what that would cost so that we can budget appropriately. And that's all I have unless there's other questions.
Just, just one. When you said that the bridge bids exceeded it, roughly what did you anticipate the bridge would cost? And roughly what was the exceeding amount?
The original budget that we had requested was $82,000, and the lowest bid, I believe, was $217,000. So that's quite a difference. And we decided that we really need to go back and look at the whole project again.
I can see why.
Yes, I know. That was quite a surprise. Thank you. Anything else? Thank you.
All right, thank you, Linda. Sandra, do you have a word from the library?
Yes, we just had the library sale on the same day as Harbor Fest. And doing those two things together, I think, is really beneficial. We appreciate the traffic that, in fact, they forced some people to come up and see us, which was very nice of them. We appreciated it. Generally speaking, the library is the least expensive amenity that the city of Prospect has. And the reason for it is because it's run by about 15 to 20 volunteers. And Linda will tell you, I see her nodding her head, volunteers are incredibly important part of us being able to offer things in our city. The book sale uses about 14 volunteers from the time that we need to put things together to the finished part of packing them up. And this time, I'd like to especially thank Carol Fulcher, Brenda Shealy, Lorraine Peak, Beth Rogers, Linda Knox, Linda Creach, Becky Colbreath, and Marilyn Carter. Marilyn Carter, as we were packing up, celebrated her 90th birthday. And she's been a volunteer for a very long time. So that was special for all of us. We have two book sales a year, and based on the recommendations over the years from our volunteers, the prices have been going down on the books. We're down to the point now where the most expensive book we have is $3. And that's an amazing price when you look at a lot of what we're selling and selling for $29 to $42 in Barnes &amp; Noble or something like that. We have a lot of very recent books that are on sale. The hardcovers are five for $10 if you buy them in bulk, and we had a lot of bulk purchasers. We had one person that spent almost $150, and we had to load up all kinds of things to get things into his truck. But we had a very large number of people that also spent about $30 or $40 in our prices at that, you know, that's an amazing number of books. Paperback books are five for $1. And so by the time we pack up any significant sale, we are loaded with books. We tend to raise somewhere around $1,500 a year. And what we use the money for is to purchase things that we don't get through another venue. The bulk of our books are leased, and when we finish using them, they go back to Baker &amp; Taylor. But audiobooks and children's books, we purchase with the money that comes out of these book sales. At this point in time, from this last book sale, we've raised approximately $600, and we have probably another 200 or so coming in. So even though our prices are going down, we're still making about the same amount of money we made five years ago. That's my report.
That's a great report.
Thank you.
Next, Jeff, do you have a police report for us?
I do. I think the economy is still playing a part in the house checks. I don't think people are proud of them. Their result numbers continue to drop. This October, we only had around 1,200 house checks compared to the monthly numbers the same period of last year. So those numbers go down. Actually, very few traffic accidents throughout the month, only two toll charges in the same period last year that were set in need. So, which would have been high money, but still, two is frequently low, I would say. So we were lucky in that sense. This, a couple of significant reports that we had, we had a very significant burglary which occurred, and a significant monetary loss was there, some very expensive jewelry. There was a limited time window in which this theft occurred while people were out to dinner. And it was so significant that that case has been turned over to LMPD detectives because they have the resources to be able to track property through computer databases that we don't have. So they can track this stuff if it shows up in other jurisdictions and things like that. So that's why we called them in to take care of this. So they have those resources, but really, we don't have, if we can check on it on a regular basis. So it gives the homeowner better coverage, so to speak, more so than what we could do. So we got them involved early.
Where was it, chief?
In Miss Brook.
In Miss Brook.
And then we had another burglary that occurred over in Hunting Creek, but it was just a single item that was taken. So that was an unusual circumstance. It was one single high-dollar item that was taken out of a very limited window. So, you know, that could very easily be a housekeeper or something like that because nothing else was disturbed at all. So, and then we had a another theft involving a scam. And these, these things really break your heart. It was an elderly woman, and it was the scam where you get a phone call that says you've got a relative out of town that needs legal assistance, and you know, your grandson's in serious trouble. He was involved in an accident. He caused damage, and this is an attorney, and you need to send money. And they buy hook, line, and sinker without ever calling the grandson, without ever calling the grandson, and took her for thousands of dollars and was able to mail thousands of dollars in cash. And it's, it's just kills you. And but it still happens. And unfortunately, they were able to find a mark in elderly people because they become trusting. And usually, it's always like a grandson, granddaughter, or somebody like that, that they really want help. So they pull on those heartstrings to get them involved in it and get them engaged. But so, you know, we try to tell people, the first thing you want to do is just hang up the call, whoever is supposedly involved in it, that grandchild or whatever, call them up on the phone. Have a little faith in them. Don't arbitrarily just take somebody else's word for it that they're in trouble. I mean, the whole story, for the lack of a better term, the story sucked at the beginning. You shouldn't have bought that store because you, there's no circumstance that you would have to send to somebody to help alleviate a problem with a car wreck. So property damage, you can call. That's not the way that that stuff is solved. So, and anyway, that's it, rolling terms of significant.
Just out of curiosity, you have a number of citizens arrests here. What kind of arrests are citizens making and?
No, there's no such thing as citizen arrest.
Citizens, citizens of this, excuse me, I read it wrong. You're right.
Yeah, that's where they.
So you're, you're.
Roadside assistance, or they stopped to help somebody.
Yeah, I read that wrong. Sorry.
All right. And the last item on the agenda is a proposed municipal order consenting to the nomination of Dennis Riggs and Wanda Powers to be on the code enforcement board. Questions about that?
Actually, a suggestion. When you do this in future, they very often, first of all, they're two separate people, and you might want to take two separate votes. In addition to that, everybody's term might not be the same. I think that these are both going to be full-term positions, but in the future, they might not be. Somebody might be filling in the end of someone else's term. And so I think that you want to have two separate actions in the future, and I think you want to state the length of the term so that you've got a complete record of that.
Okay, well, this time we have it as you see it, and we can redo it another way. But I think we need to, they're both, well, Dennis Riggs is on the board right now, and his term expired, and he's willing to serve a three-year term starting approximately now.
Right, and I understand.
Wanda Powers is brand new, so that's a little bit different, but they're both.
Well, I understand, though, that Wanda Powers would be going into the term that Lynn Dowling has. And I understand that Lynn Dowling will be finishing her term.
Right.
So Wanda Powers actually would be a new term. Is that correct?
That's right.
Lynn's, Lynn's term expired along with.
Dennis Riggs?
Yeah, at the same time.
Okay, right.
I move that we accept.
Second?
Moved in second. Any more discussion about it? And now we'll come to a vote. Sandra, how do you vote?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Aye.
See, Greg?
Aye.
And.
Aye.
Ananimos. It's approved, and so be it. Any other discussion? Any comments from citizens? And we're ready to adjourn.
I move. Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Adjourn.
Thanks, everybody.
Could be a new record.
And we're clear.